Motion to adopt agenda. Is there a second? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, the motion carries. Next item is the approval of minutes of the April 8th meeting. And I've got one correction before I see if anybody else has any others. It is the weeping radish. Weeping, W-E-E-P-I-N-G, not the weep and radish. Yeah. Does anybody have any other additions or corrections to the minutes? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve? So moved. Is there a second? All those in favor? Aye. Aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, the motion carries. We now move to a period of public comment. Members of the public are invited to address the planning board. Public comment is not intended to require the board to answer any impromptu questions or take any action on items brought up during the public comment period. Speakers will address all the comments to the board as a whole and not one individual member. Discussions between speakers and members of the audience will not be allowed. Time limits are three minutes per person or five minutes per group. Please identify yourselves so that your statements can be recorded. Anybody have a comment? Seeing none, we'll move on to new business. First item is the Dare Arts mural. Want to pull that up on the board, Melissa?
Yes, let me scroll down to that. And Jessica Sands from the Arts Council is here with us this evening. If you all have any questions for her. I can flip through this, let's see.
Next page, I think.
There.
Yeah, that's it.
If you all want, I can, let's see if I can zoom in on that. So this went to Park last week. And then on Monday, and then on Thursday, the Main Street Board also considered it. I have a letter from the Main Street Board that they sent over this afternoon, so I can read that to you all. And then...
Melissa, I think would also be helpful to know the provisions. We went through those with Josh and Horton.
Okay, sure.
What provisions of zoning would apply in this particular case?
Thank you, that was my question. I do not want to be in the position to approve art.
So the sign ordinance is where we find what regulates murals. Bear with me while I pull this up to read this to you all. Okay, for reference and the minutes. It's Article 18, which is our sign ordinance. Section 18-1, the statement of intent, number two. It says this is the intent in allowing and regulating murals to encourage and embrace the artistic community in Manio. Permitted murals should embrace Manio's heritage, or Roanoke, which is spelled wrong, island landscape. The mural's subject should not be able to be construed as signage and should not be representative of the business where it is located. So because this is the Arts Council, where this mural would be located, that certainly doesn't, there isn't a concern there. And then, I think that's it. Murals approved by the Planning and Zoning Board and the Board of Commissioners.
Spider.
Murals may not have images representative of the business. Murals shall reflect Manio's heritage or Roanoke Island landscape and be representational or non-representational. So the ordinance doesn't say murals must be approved by the Planning and Zoning Board and the Board of Commissioners, but we're operating under the assumption that it's just safe to take it to all spots. And because murals are so significant in some of the tenants of Main Street and their economic development improvement plan, Main Street also has reviewed it. And I can go ahead and move into what their comments were, which is, "Dear members of the Planning and Zoning Board, on behalf of the Manio-Main Street Advisory Board, we are writing to express our strong support for the mural proposed, proposal submitted by Dare Arts, currently under consideration by the Planning and Zoning Board. We believe this project presents a thoughtful and meaningful opportunity to enhance downtown Manio through public art that is creatively engaging, contextually appropriate, and community-oriented. By selecting a non-contributing surface, the project carefully preserves the integrity of Manio's architectural heritage while still allowing for creative expression. The narrative focus of the mural is equally commendable. Rather than depicting a single figure or moment, the design aims to portray a broader story of life in Manio during a specific period in time. The storytelling approach aligns with the town's ongoing efforts to interpret and celebrate its cultural identity in ways that are authentic and reflective of our shared history. Public art plays a vital role in shaping and vibrant and welcoming downtown, and we see this project as a potential catalyst for future creative endeavors. As this new mural in several years, as the first new mural in several years, its installation would not only enhance the visual landscape of our community, but also encourage the other property owners, organizations, and artists to consider similar investments in place-making and cultural storytelling. We commend Dare Arts for their vision and commitment to Manio, and we respectfully urge your support of this proposal as a positive step forward for our community. Thank you for your consideration and your continued service to the town of Manio. Sincerely, Manio-Main Street Advisory Board." So, and then I did not attend the Park meeting, but as our liaison, you wanted to share?
I did. I think it would be helpful to know also where this is located, because many of us had some difficulty.
Between 108 Budley and the Arts Council in the alley there.
Many probably don't even know about, but it is there. It's a brick, it's a brick.
Very stark looking, very stark looking brick wall. This would be a nice improvement to it.
It's actually a nice area to do something like this in, because it's really nice.
There it is, right there.
Yeah. That looks a little brighter than it really is.
So the mural would be on the alley side, or?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. I had to go down and drive around it, wasn't it?
Yeah, you almost, you have to really look for it to be able to go in, yeah. I think some of us, maybe we talked a little bit about inclusion and making sure that this does represent appropriately the Manio, Roanoke Island, as the zoning provisions call for. You know, taking a look at it, I think it does meet those provisions, those requirements, and it will be a nice addition to the town.
It's historic, it doesn't advertise anything, it just depicts a time and history, and like I said, it's kind of a nice upgrade to a pretty stark looking wall.
I believe there'll be some additional descriptions of this?
Yes, please. I think the microphone is on for you, Jessica.
Is that the only two places where she's come up here that murals are mentioned in the ordinance?
I'll just hold. Oh, wow. Good evening, for those of you who don't know me, my name is Jessica Sands, and I'm the Executive Director at Dare Arts. For those of you I haven't met, thank you for allowing me the time to speak to you tonight. To answer your question, I already forgot it. What was it?
Had more to do, I think there's going to be some written description of what this is.
Yes, yes, yes. So when you view the site, there's a piece of the wall that, so the mural will take up the last three sections. There's basically five sections to that wall that step down. So the three all the way in the alley will be where the mural is installed. The second one has sort of a electrical, big electrical box blocking it. So the first one, that's the one you see from the street, is where we will have some kind of signage that will invite people to come view it. There will be information about historic references, information about the artist. There may be a scan code, so it's not too much text. And it will be there to draw attention. As you're walking down the street, you would absolutely see a sign there. And obviously, once there's art there, it's going to be more noticeable to the eye. But they'll certainly be, we haven't developed what that sign looks like or whatnot, but we'll make sure we run it through the permitting and all of that. But hopefully that answers your question on that.
Yeah, I think there's probably a desire to make sure that they, especially the visitors, understand this does not incorporate the entire Manio and Roanoke Island of the persons who have lived here or living here now. And it would be good to kind of describe that a little bit.
Yeah, we will, there'll probably be a scan code to go to the historic photos that are on one of the pages here and explain where the art was inspired from, for sure, and give the time periods and the information that we've included in this.
Got another question for you. Is somebody going to take a look at the masonry on that wall and make sure it doesn't need to be repointed or fixed up before she goes to all the trouble of painting that on there and then they find out that the brick's deteriorating?
Yeah, that's not old brick, so it should be okay. It's newer, it's not historic, it's not from the original foundation and all that. So it should be fine. We've looked at it. It was part of the original proposal for the courtyard. Dare Arts invested about $600,000 into that courtyard, and a component of that was turning that alleyway into an arwaq as part of a permanent feature. So that was always the plan for that side. But yes, we will be making sure that it's appropriately attacked, as it were, with paint. No, we will take some measures, for sure.
Don't want to count on the paint holding the wall together.
That's right. The backside is less crumbly than the other old bricks in town, for sure.
Thank you.
One question, and I think I know the answer, but I don't want to assume. Given that the mural will be on the wall, there's no impact on the building if the building is going to be at some point possibly put forth at this door? So is it safe to assume there's no impact to that?
So unfortunately, that building isn't eligible to be, because it's been renovated so many times, it can never be, well, not in this time period, be designated as capital H historic, so it wouldn't apply.
I'm sorry. Anybody else? Well, it's sort of way off topic, since you brought it up. You say it could be, I didn't know that, could be designated historic except by the, what? National Register of Historic Deeds?
I believe so.
Okay.
I was not part of the group that has looked into that, but that's what I've been told.
Because we still have our own registry of local historic things and zoning for that, so. But, I'm ready to move forward, I'm going to make a motion. Yeah, being that murals are only mentioned twice in the ordinance, and has to make sure you don't paint like a big pizza on your building and call it art, and this doesn't sell a product or compete anyway. It's actually doing a nice thing for the town and increases traffic. I'll make a motion to go ahead and approve. Is there a second?
Second motion.
All those in favor?
Planning Board, or is that not Planning Board? It does go to the Board of Commissioners? Five levels of approval for this mural?
All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion carries.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Next item of business is zoning text amendment to add hotels and conferences centers and the parking restrictions required.
Okay, so I gave a little synopsis earlier, but let's rehash that. So... I want to show you all the... I think it's useful to first show you all kind of... I think it's useful to first show you all kind of how I got to this place, and it should only take a minute to do that. So staff were contacted about changing the pool area of Hotel Manio, and when I researched this with Josh, I realized that our ordinance is kind of lacking in helping us to determine parking calculations. So when they, the current owners purchased Hotel Manio and they renovated the restaurant, we, at that time I did a parking calculation for line four in our parking table, which is miscellaneous rooms-for-rent situations. And then I went on down further to determine the parking required for the restaurant, and then added... So part of that whole site is actually in Dare County, so the outdoor pool and the building behind the outdoor pool are in Dare County's zoning. And so I checked with their, with the county planner, and he gave me their calculation and I did this whole table to determine that they had appropriate parking for the amount of seats they were putting into the renovated restaurant. There were no change views, because it's always been a restaurant, but they were adding tables. So we ran that calculation, and they had an excess of 18 parking spaces. Well, the indoor pool area is considerably large, and knowing that their intention is for that to change into some kind of event space, I realized, in going to the ordinance to guide us, to tell them how this would be done, I learned that our ordinance was lacking in that, unlike many other ordinances for hotels, where a hotel would be listed in the table, and then, for instance, Duck and Nax Head both have a mention of these accessory uses. And so, of course, Duck has the sandaling that has some event space in it and a restaurant, and there are some hotels in Nax Head that also have that larger event space. Kitty Hawk also has the Hilton Garden Inn. So this is a combination of some of those, but mostly Duck's, what we are proposing. And you can see here in our existing ordinance where it says miscellaneous rooms-for-rent situations. So I think this is where we are. It's going to take a minute to load. So what we have come up with in order to try to make it smoother when they apply is to go ahead and get in front of this... Now we can get back there. And so I'm going to start at the top two, because I also cleaned up one thing that I feel like has maybe not been talked about by this particular planning board, but the definition of the accessory dwelling unit, there's a requirement that the property owner has to live in either the primary or the accessory dwelling unit, which for years has been unenforceable.
We tried to clean that up about five years ago.
And when it got to the Board of Commissioners, that zoning text amendment did not pass, but I don't think that it was because of this language, but because of whatever else it was tied to. So I brought it back here just because I had time and we were working on a zoning text amendment. And then, we currently do not have a definition of a hotel in our ordinance, but we have a definition of a hotel room, which is an overnight accommodation rented by the night in conjunction with an on-premises public reception and lobby space that does not have a cooktop or range and is not intended for extended stay. If a range or cooktop are installed, the accommodation, it shall be considered a dwelling unit. So we went back and we created two different definitions for hotel. A commercial establishment that contains multiple hotel rooms for the purposes of providing overnight lodging facilities to the general public for compensation. Any structure constructed according to the North Carolina Residential Code is not considered a hotel. That helps the Inns, the B&amp;Bs that we've got that are... And hotel conference and event, a hotel with ancillary interior conference, meeting or event areas accessible for use by guests of the hotel or rentable by third parties who are not guests of the hotel, and that the gross floor of the area equals or exceeds 5% of the gross floor area of the entire facility inclusive of the conference, meeting, event space. No hotel may have conference, meeting, or event space areas that are exceeding 15% of the gross floor area of the entire facility. And so that kind of narrows how this applies. So then, we had to fix the numbering of all of these. And then you can see here in the parking table, we add line 31, which is the hotel, one parking space for each room to be rented plus one additional parking space for each three employees, conference, meeting, and event space, one space per each 200 square feet of gross floor area times .75. So that, so you get the whole calculation and then you multiply it by 75%, so it's not the whole. And so that is what we came up with in order to be better prepared for an application if we were to get one.
What was that definition of hotels you're reading, about 15% square? The event site could be more than 15%? You just read that one. Where is that?
It's in the definition.
Definition of hotel conference meeting?
Each two.
Line 35.
Go down, go down. You've got to go up to the next page.
Hotel, is that, that's new language?
And this is what Town Attorney Gallup has suggested, and this was a workaround to, because of the downzoning bill, that's, he crafted it this way to help us avoid getting...
Getting slapped on the wrist for violating the new downzoning.
The new downzoning thing is being afraid of that before we do anything is really hurting our abilities to govern.
And every other local government in North Carolina.
It's like, well, we can't allow anything because we can never take it back.
Right.
So let's just say no to everything. Why the 15% of the gross floor area for the entire facility? I'm sure you had a good reason. I'm sure it comes from somewhere.
It comes from Hotel Manio.
Well, is it just that, you said this is similar or the same?
Is Duck, or is it just based on Duck and Kitty Hawk?
It's mostly from Duck and Nax Head. I felt like Kitty Hawk had some vagueness to their ordinance. Nax Head's had a different, let me see, they had a different number in their calculation. Let's see.
Do we have a parking calculation for just a, here it is, two conference and then site?
Was Nax Head greater than 15% or less than 15%?
Well, they don't have, so that definition comes from Ben, because we were trying to make it apply in a less specific, or a more specific way so that it could then...
Well, I guess basically what he's trying to do is say it's a hotel with a conference center versus if you get too much floor area in the event conference center, that's a conference center with accommodations.
Okay, and then, this is what Nax Head's hotel parking table says. One point spaces for each unit, or one parking space per bedroom, whichever is greater, plus one parking shift for every two employees of the largest shift, plus one parking space for every 100 square feet of conference or assembly area. For other accessory uses such as restaurants or retails, parking requirements shall be calculated at 75% of the standard for each permitted accessory use. So we went a more simple route.
That's a pretty convoluted way of regulating parking.
Should there, or would it be helpful to tie that requirement to the number of people the fire marshal says that's basically accommodated?
So that will get covered when we receive the building permit application.
This is just a general requirement.
Right.
It's not specific to a location, which is if the fire marshal designates that when you apply for a building permit.
But that, I mean, we don't have to make it specific. You can make it whatever the fire marshal says, and you got a specific number.
The building code takes care of that. And so they will have to design enough egress for the maximum amount of people. And I know one of the things they're going to need to do, because the architect came with them to this meeting, in order to achieve the amount of egress, they will need the, there's a back deck, so if you were in the pool area and you walked out towards the outdoor pool, there's a deck there. They'll have two stairwells coming off of that deck in order to achieve the amount of egress that they need. And then that also creates an entrance without going all the way through the hotel directly into the event site, too. So they will, they will meet all those building code requirement standards, and also they have a structural engineer who will help them design how they cover the pool.
So this is just for hotel, this is for event sites within hotels?
Yes.
Just curious, what's the parking requirement for just an event site?
We don't have that.
And that's not listed as a conditional use?
It's not a special use either.
In the zoning code.
Some of this hotel that we're talking about is in the county and not in Manio. Does that have any bearing on this at all? Or is it the total number of hotel rooms?
The buildings that are in Dare County are totally separate. You know, there are two buildings in the back and that swimming pool, and it's, you know...
Are they, you don't calculate this? They're not part of the calculation?
I calculated their parking for the entire, I calculated...
You would calculate it all for both?
Yes, and so what they have, including the units that they have in Dare County, and all of the single-family home, the units that are kind of off of Harriet Street, the restaurant, and then they have a meeting room above the restaurant.
All of that is calculated?
All of it.
Okay.
And then whatever, and that's where I got stuck. So when we wrote the building permit for the restaurant, it was clear. And I made sure that what I applied to the parking calculation, that for Dare County rooms, I used their standard and not assumed that the towns and the counties was the same, and I don't think it was, but it was maybe off a different half a space. So I calculated it all, and they, when they did the restaurant, they added a considerable amount of parking. There's that gravel lot on the other side of the building, and so they had an excess of 18 spaces. Well, there's in between the main building and where the parking is at the gravel restaurant, the gravel parking at the restaurant, there were some parking spaces there that were removed, and they've created a little lawn area behind the restaurant. And so in adding more use where there could be 100-ish people, my reaction was, where are these people going to park? And how do we determine that? And the ordinance will guide me. And so that's why I thought it was an opportunity to bring this to you all to say, maybe this is a way forward.
They have not applied yet for anything. It's just discussion at this point. Was there something upstairs that they were going to do as well as far as a restaurant?
So upstairs of the restaurant is a meeting room. They've renovated that.
Okay, but is that part of this calculation then? For meeting space?
Yeah, it was.
Yeah.
And the health club and all that?
Well...
Should they ever get like some...
So the health club is kind of included in the new stuff? Because that's that second floor area.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So they would gain some there, because they wouldn't need parking with the health club anymore, because it would be a health club anymore, so...
Yeah, I mean, that, the pool area, if you are not familiar, is huge. I did ask...
That was an Olympic-sized pool.
Um, let me see, if I can. The existing pool size, the surface area of the water only, is 2,141 square feet.
And there was a deck all the way around it, and there were locker rooms up there?
And the existing pool room to be converted into a meeting room, and this includes the pool water, is 5,164 square feet.
So does that meet the space requirements that we have defined in here, the 15%?
Yeah. The percentage of the meeting room area relative to the total of enclosed square feet is 12.8.
And this doesn't preclude them from doing what they're talking about doing, this, they need to provide enough parking?
No, this just applies zoning that we don't have at this point, to make sure of it. And they have, on the south end of the property...
They've got a vacant lot off of the parking lot right now. It's... It's undeveloped and it's got some gravel on it, some weeds growing on it.
And because I think that there is a lot of, they're going to calculate it and I haven't seen those numbers yet, but there's a lot of lot coverage there. And the building, the building pre-exists Mania zoning. So we do. It is considered grandfathered. It is non-conforming. But as I explained to them, you know, the path of least resistance is really to take that that lot and then maybe some area towards Harriet Street and do like a an area sort of how we did COA before with the informal parking, but doing a material like GeoE or something like that. And give them a better parking surface and a buffer so that they could have overflow parking when they got into that situation, but it not be a sea of parking. So they're working on what they propose and I think that that would, if they just had wheel stops.
Yeah.
Do you think it would be worthwhile kind of having another meeting in this just to defer it somewhat?
That's absolutely okay. I mean, that's.
Just to give some more thought to to this.
Do we have the time with the project applied to address this?
We don't have. An application yet. And I don't. Right now.
If everybody wants to do that, is there a motion to table this to the next meeting?
I make a motion to table this to the next meeting.
All seconds.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, just table to the following meeting.
And I'll suggest that in the meantime, if you all have particular thoughts about this, just send them to me in an email so we can consider them and include them moving forward. These are our suggestions. I'm not saying they're the best. This is. But we're happy to continue working on it.
Okay. Next item is sidewalk material requirements. Want to add brushed concrete to the existing exposed aggregate and brick requirement.
So this matter came before the Board of Commissioners at their meeting last week because Malcolm Fearing, you all are familiar with his subdivision over off of Bowser Town called The Quarters. So he is planning to do parking and a sidewalk as the ordinance requires. And he had, he was making the request, which the ordinance allows developers to do, which is to use an alternate material. Of course, the ordinance calls for exposed aggregate or brick materials to be used, but allows for the Board of Commissioners to approve something different. So his request was to use brushed concrete, which is in keeping with everything that's around there. So in in front of the, he had pictures in front of the EMT station along Exeter Street in front of Baytree and Harbor Town and and different areas that he would be tying into they were brushed concrete. And so the board approved it and then said, well, maybe this is something that the planning board could consider. And Josh did a considerable amount of research on this. And we utilized some of Fred's expertise with ADA. And one of the things that we sought to understand was, you know, is it is this exposed aggregate or brick requirement suitable with ADA standards? And in researching that, we found this definition that says openings in the floor ground surfaces shall not allow passage of a sphere of more than a half an inch diameter, except as allowed in notes, other sections. Elongated openings shall be placed so that the long dimension is perpendicular to the dominant direction of travel. And we watched some videos that are on the website for ADA and they're like 15 minutes. I wasn't going to. I can send them to you if you are.
Problem you can get into with the brick sidewalk is if the mortar joints are a little too wide, the wheelchair ones caught in them.
And and that's so their their definition is any space that is more than a half an inch. And so we did a little tour and I forgot to email these. But the the exposed aggregate, I took a, instead of a ruler, I took a post-it note and I measured a half inch. We went around town and I put this post-it note down. And there are a lot of spaces that in the exposed aggregate that offer us that amount of space. And and in watching the videos, you can understand, I mean, it is people in wheelchair, even the self-propelled ones. So.
The other problem you get into with the exposed aggregate is the way you do that is you pour concrete. You seed it with pea gravel and they put a retarder on there and then come back and wash it so that it exposes that pea gravel. And over time, some of that retarder soaks into the concrete and over time those voids between the pea gravel get bigger.
Yes.
So you may start out at less than a half inch, but over time you can end up at three quarters of an inch.
Yes. So we used the standard that we thought was appropriate in kind of determining this. And so that's this kind of our fact finding at this point. And and if you all saw reason to include brushed concrete, then we can, if you're tabling your previous motion to table the other text amendment, that's something that we could probably roll into it if if you all saw reason to do that or not. You don't need to.
When he says to to remove the brush aggregate for the, for given their.
Yes.
Given the ADA implications, I mean, I have, I can remember pushing my mom on in a wheelchair on the aggregate and it's challenging sometimes. You didn't want to, didn't take much of a pull man.
Yeah.
To to stop a wheelchair.
When when I bring my sister to town, she travels down the asphalt of the road because it's easier.
The light poles are a bigger issue than the exposed aggregate.
The old, the old power poles that are right in the in the travel of the sidewalks.
Just why is a bigger issue? I'm using Google Earth right now to fly around downtown Mania, looking at all that. Most of, most of downtown is exposed aggregate, except for in front of like the waterfront shops. They always said that is all brushed concrete.
What what Malcolm is calling brushed concrete, he's referring to the normal room finish on plain concrete.
I think it just makes sense to put. I don't know how you, it's not that word, but. Kind of put what's in the neighborhood, like you say, it is that area where he's building new buildings, all brushed concrete. Just drag those concrete sidewalks.
Yeah, I don't see.
Or to redevelop downtown and have all this exposed aggregate, put brush concrete section in the middle would look very strange, I think.
Well, can we go back? You know, as far as where he wants to put it, I don't see any problem with that because it's already, it's already like that over there.
His request.
Well, can we go back and discuss though the this this problem of the exposed aggregate? I agree, Bill, and my wife just went through this last year. It was impossible to use a walker on the sidewalk. You just can't do it. So you have to go into the street to be able to use that. It's, you know, and wheelchairs would be the same way. Should we prohibit those from being used unless it's, you know, to replace some existing?
Yeah, because it's already all of it downtown.
But for anything new, should we prohibit that from from occurring? And it should be just the concrete.
And the bricks are even worse over time. Even if when they start out, it doesn't take long for them to.
Probably all the tree. Well, it specifically says that you have to have a concrete under the brick in the ordinance. And that keeps it from doing what if just a normal brick sidewalk would do. But the problem you get into in town is there's all those plantings on the side. When the roots get underneath, they start buttering it up. That's that's the biggest problem with the sidewalks, even the exposed aggregate. There's spots where, you know, they keep grinding it down and grinding it down because the roots, tree roots just keep pushing it up.
I mean, it's very, it's it's pretty. It's it's very nice looking. The brick less so in my my view. But it just doesn't work in this day and age. It just is not for ADA. It's just not really appropriate at all, I don't believe.
I would agree, and I think you can grandfather what's there in place, but. Well, I think I'm looking at, I'm going to go down the street here and Google. Except for in front of the waterfront shops, almost everything downtown exposed aggregate.
Right. So you can imagine our visitors coming and residents are having difficulties using those sidewalks if they are in a wheelchair or using a walker.
I think there's been discussion about redoing sidewalks and getting rid of the power utility poles. So if that is the case, what do we want those sidewalks to look like?
Yeah.
And why keep going with the unknown problem?
Well, and I think that's that's some of the intention of the board suggesting that it come before you all as they're developing their strategic plan, which is going to include these very big vision projects, you know, of getting rid of the utility poles and all those kinds of things. If if you go through all the effort of doing these big street projects to make things more accessible.
It's probably that Malcolm developed right here, he put an entire exposed aggregate driveway in. Would it match the sidewalk so it looked like it was concrete?
And also something else to, if you all want, we can look at it and bring it back next month. But, you know, our last land use plan survey that when our, when we did our land use plan, we did a survey. And I think that even census data would show that the sector of our population that is growing is a retired.
Senior.
I was going to say senior.
More mature.
Is is retired. And so, you know, there there's that component, too, of, you know, what is the makeup of our community as well? So we can, we can bring that back to you all and take a a look at that.
I have a lot of questions, like if you don't allow the exposed aggregate, which all of downtown is exposed aggregate. What are the other options? I'm not a concrete expert. I'm just telling these words out because that's what I've heard if that's exposed aggregate. I don't know really what that means. There's like some of that. Looks like that, that's still.
There's all kinds of stamped concrete you can put in where they put the concrete down and you have a metal stamp. I mean.
There you go. Is that is that ADA compliant? And then and then again.
Well, all you have to do is just keep.
Is that the problem with our town being not ADA compliant is the exposed aggregate or power poles or the lack of ramps or the busted sidewalks with the?
Well.
Which problems you run into in your personal experience?
So the because of the, we don't, we are exempt because of how small we are. But if you're looking for a standard to apply, the standard is the ADA. And so that's, that's why we went with that because that is the law that can inform us of what the best practices are. What what was the group called, Josh? The?
It was a hard one to get to, but it was, it's up top in the United States official website.
But they're the ones, and I can send this around you.
Americans with Disabilities Act.
Well, but they have a, let me see. It's a weird name.
Is it a government or a private?
The US Access Board.
Is it still in existence?
Their website is still active. And the videos are older, but it does, it does make you think about it in a.
What do you mean we're so small? We're ADA.
Less than a certain number of people, you don't have to comply with all the requirements.
I don't know what the threshold is, but it's because we only have 35 employees.
So it's just this structure here. It's not the town itself.
Yeah. How do you, yeah, how's that work?
You're exempt because of the number of employees, not the population.
Yes.
Falling off the sidewalk.
No, you're saying that the town here, this building and the sidewalks are exempt, but the town itself is not.
No, we are. And and it's because it's because of the number of employees that we had. A few years ago municipalities were required to do this survey. It was when James was, Mr. Ayers was here. And we did not have to have an ADA transition plan because of the amount of employees that we had fell under the threshold. And I think it's because towns with as limited staff as we have, we don't have the expertise.
The number of of the population.
We have a lot of people in town that can't get down the sidewalks because they're too bumpy. An issue.
Well, Jamie is.
It has been my experience with strollers and.
My experience, my wife had to use the road.
Couldn't what?
She had to use the road when she was using a water. So you have more people in the road than you otherwise would.
You have to use the road because the sidewalks aren't wide enough.
Well, that, but it's also smoother surface.
Yeah. Problem, problem with walkers, it's got those little wheels in the exposed aggregate. You know, they just get caught behind all the little pebbles that are raised in the sidewalk.
And wheelchairs have the small wheels on the front.
They have narrow wheels and the small ones on the front.
I think given the strategic plan that's coming up and scope with some of that work, it would be smart on our part to spend some time looking at this and what what we should be putting in place to support those efforts.
Yeah, can we get back to your original question? I was just to add, was it to add brushed concrete or plain concrete to the allowed concrete?
Well, there, there are a number of options of how to move forward. Do you add that or do you add stamp? I haven't researched stamped.
Well, the stamp you can, you can do whatever you want. You stamp it and you can dye it any color you want. And when you stamp it, I mean, they can push that what it is. It's a metal grate that has whatever pattern. They have Ashley stone pattern, flagstone pattern, all sorts of stuff. And they set the thing down and the guy gets on it. Well, you can push it just a small amount into the concrete to get the impression without having wheels get caught in it. Or you can stamp it way down and then you have the issue with, you know, bumps going over all the joints between the pattern.
We have, we have stamped asphalt on Conference Streets. The parking areas next to the sidewalk look like bricks.
That's that's stamped.
Yeah.
Are those bricks?
No, it's stamped.
Okay.
Yeah, that's good. You can, yeah, they just stain it. I mean, those sound walls that are up on 64 in Virginia, I designed all those years ago. But in some states, we did some up in New York around a power plant where they not only stamped it, they put patterns in it. We stamped patterns in there of a lighthouse and fish and everything else and then stained it a color. So, I mean, there's all kinds of stuff you can do to concrete to make it look pretty.
The brick really fits the manual way. I didn't know it was stamped concrete.
Well, it's it's asphalt, not concrete, but it's the same concept.
It's stamped asphalt. They red though, isn't it?
They dyed it.
Yeah, you dye it and they have these industrial dyes. It's not allowed by the ordinance, so y'all can notice next week. Exposed aggregate or actual bricks.
But yeah, what you can do is just stamp.
But the sidewalks are all exposed aggregates.
You can stamp it to look like brick and just not go so deep that it creates a problem with wheels getting caught in the mortar, fake mortar joints. And then you can stain it red to look like the brick. Okay.
I will double back on one thing that I have in front of me now so you all can. I will double back on one thing that I have in front of me now so you all can see this. The Access Board is still existing.
Oh, good.
They have a conference in July. But this is on their About Us page, it says the Access Board is an independent federal agency that advances accessibility through leadership. And accessible design and the development of accessibility guidelines and standards. It says a lot more, but that's.
Is that a part of the department or is it an agency?
It says independent federal agency.
Okay.
Got to be careful when you approach them because they got, they can get some pretty onerous standards to slap you with.
I did try to call them. I have not yet received a phone call back, but I did leave a message on their technical expertise.
They might, they might have had a staff reduction like a lot of the other federal agencies.
I will continue to wait and we'll try to call again. But we did reach out to them to see what. What we could learn.
Is this little diagram with the half inch dimension from their standards?
Yes.
But you, um, you travel around with your sister downtown in a wheelchair, you know firsthand what where the problems are.
We use the streets.
The streets. Because of sidewalks with the. And she mentioned that, you want to talk about that, the. The thing's brought up for many, many years, putting the power poles underground, what does that take?
A lot of money.
ADA to you. I forget how much it is.
Lot of money, just mainly not only for burying the cable, but all the repaving and redoing the sidewalks and everything you have to do.
And what we've suggested, when I say big street projects, you know, many of our streets that. Are aligned east to west, downtown Budley, Ananias Stair, Sir Walter Raleigh, and Agona. All have the old 1940s. Sewer collection system, so. That's in the 10 year capital improve, those projects are in the 10 year capital improvement plan. And so what we've talked about is just kind of aligning by each street, water line replacement, sewer line replacement, undergrounding, utility lines. And any stormwater upgrades that would be necessary. And so. Those are big scoped projects, but it makes better sense to do that than to repave the road every four times when you.
Exactly.
So the town would have to pay for Dominion to put those. And they would, or Dominion would have to agree to do that and pay for it.
And there's. There are considerations that. The power lines are buried under Queen Elizabeth Avenue. And so on Queen Elizabeth Avenue, there are areas that we have tried to. Buffer so they're not completely visible. Bypassers by, but at the Christmas Street parking lot and in front of the waterfront condos, there are. The infrastructure that is usually on a pole, it's in a box and so. We would need to identify areas where those things would exist on the ground.
Most of this property lines go down the street.
So it's going to require easements and.
We got the same issue in Pirate's Cove because everything's underground, but then periodically you have a big green box with a transformer in it that used to be up on a pole.
You have one near your driveway.
And Pirate's Cove also has, so at least. All that property on town is all private property.
Bushes in front of it.
Yeah.
With the county, with the, not the county, Dominion probably have to put this on private property and who wants that to be on.
Well, I mean, it depends, they have easements all over the place because that's, you know, if you squawk about it, they just say. We have an easement, we're allowed to come in here whenever we want and do whatever we want.
The other issue with those two is that once, hopefully this will happen when you take the poles off out of the sidewalks. But the sidewalks are going to have to be expanded as well widthwise, I believe. They're fairly narrow now with a hole in the middle.
Four feet if not six.
Yeah, it's going to, so that's going to be probably an issue as well with some homeowners that they're going to lose.
Either that or Sir Walter Raleigh is one way.
Could, oh my gosh.
Yeah, well.
Big meeting tonight with change the street direction. Taking six feet everybody's property, raising their taxes to pay for underwater lines.
And don't forget the new signage.
And they got to stay in smoother sidewalks.
Do we want to go ahead and table this issue also on the sidewalks till we get a little more information?
Yes. Big bush in the table, all these issues.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The issue is tabled. So we now move to a period of board member comments. Jamie?
Have we covered enough tonight?
We just talked about everything.
That's your comment?
Yes, sir.
Bill?
Only comment is just to get something out on the on the radar there. I know 64 is not kind of our issue, but it's really rough going down. Are you in discussions with the Department of Transportation about doing something with that stretch? Going down toward the north end?
I, so I sit on a regional board where municipalities and counties work with DOT. They, so currently we don't have. The staff person in that seat, so we're borrow, it's, the Almaral Commission is our council of government. And they staff this regional transportation group. There was a meeting and I wasn't able to attend it, usually there's a board member of one of our commissioners that sits on it too. But I can circle back and find out from their staff about that, but also. I will be having a meeting soon, so our area. Big North Carolina Transportation Board of Directors, we just had a new member. Join and it's Tess Judge. So she has now gone on to the State Board of Transportation and we were talking yesterday about getting together. So that we could sit down and talk about. Not just the pavement, which she's over here several times a week, so she's familiar, but also a number of issues. That we've been advocating for for a while with DOT, like the creek murdles and.
Isn't Paul Time now going to be in charge of all of that?
No, he is the commissioner for the Division of Motor Vehicles, DMV.
Oh, yeah.
And and so Ms. Tess will be our go to person for DOT, it used to be Alan Moran.
Right, Alan Moran, and then before that it was Malcolm.
And Malcolm has served in that capacity too, so.
One question, so who is our DOT?
Board member? Tess Judge.
Tess Judge.
Yes. But this is new in the last few weeks. She's not going to be in the citizens guide.
Weren't we going to have a DOT representative come to the either Board of Commissioners or the Planning and zoning board?
The.
Talk about some of these issues.
The. And I'm not sure what his title is, the.
Engineer or something.
The regional engineer.
Regional engineer.
Um, well, the traffic engineer is who came, Jason Davidson, and. I, I.
I thought there was a request to bring him or somebody else back to talk about some of the issues.
So we have asked, but I think it's better to inform Ms. Judge.
For sure.
Because I, so at some point it's going to require an appropriation from.
Yeah.
The the big transportation board, not. The the DOT staff only have what they have in their coffers and what is programmed.
Some of them were small issues, relatively small issues, like crossing, you know, signage where the crossings are.
Yes.
Some of that's been improved, but.
So, yes, and for instance, at COA, their county is picking up the cost to install. Some kind of DOT installed and approved mechanism there to make it safer there. DOT will be installing a traffic signal and crosswalks at the elementary school. So we've, we've made some progress on some larger. Items with them since we've been working with them. We still have safety concerns about the. Intersection of Weingina and. The side street there beside the elementary school. There are some blind spots because that's a corner or a curve, I rather. So. But I think getting Ms. Judge up to speed is is first and then we can work with staff again too. But that change in kind of leadership there.
Randy?
What I hope will be brief, but I had the opportunity to let many of you to see the renditions and work from the NC State students who were here. I thought it was an overly impressive number of ideas. I was particularly taken by the fact that they took into account the two excuses for not doing anything, one, no housing and the other. The sewer system that is available to us, they had some creative ideas of how you deal with water, wastewater and other things. And I just look forward to the opportunity as part of a planning board to dig into some of this as decisions are made going forward.
Yeah, that was, it was very well done.
Bob?
Melissa, on that point, are are the slides going to be presented online that we can look at them a little closer?
I am.
I did have some difficulty kind of zeroing in on some of that.
Poster can only tell you so much. I'm, I'm waiting on all of that stuff to get packaged and resent to us. So for those of you who are able to. They will be back on Saturday at the CSI open house. Also on Saturday, we have the litter pickup, which is at a new location, Magnolia Market, because it's the first day of the downtown market. So. There, there will be, the students who weren't necessarily able to attend. Two weeks ago, many of them will be back because they were graduating from the program at that time, so. Not all the same faces, some, some of them will be, but so they'll be presenting then and then Professor Fox is packaging all that stuff up. One of their reports is 184 pages, so there's a lot more information than what's on the poster than what we have received at this point, so.
Will you also have the posters at some point or are they, don't keep those?
They are still at the PNC building because they were remaining here. I can cert, I'm not sure if they're planning to take them back or not, but if they aren't, we can get them reprinted and have.
Very well done, but it was just so much.
It is a lot.
Information and it's really, it was hard to really visualize some of that.
And when they did their final presentations, which served as their exams, Commissioner Bassnight, Clerk Whitley and I. Went and participated in that program. And it was really interesting, each group had about 15 minutes to present and each group consisted of about six students. So it went really fast and there were the four groups, of course, so there was a lot of information that was exchanged that day. And and we'll get that once they package it together for us and and figure out the. Digital way to deliver that to people because I, they're big documents too, and I think that's part of what. What we're working through or what they're working through is how to actually put that somewhere to send it or if they're bringing it on Saturday, which is a possibility too.
The, well, I, I also wanted to mention the litter pickup, it's going to be at eight, eight forty-five for donuts and coffee. At Magnolia Pavilion and nine o'clock would be the start of that and Rodney and Sarah are here and congratulations again for all your efforts. Thank you for everything you've done over how many years now? A lot of years. Yeah, well, thank you for that. The the other thing, can you, Melissa, can you provide an update on the landscaping issues on a couple of the. Facilities in town, Ace Hardware and Piggly Wiggly, there was some.
So Piggly Wiggly is back in compliance, they have.
Okay.
They have planted the bushes. The youth center, they have planted like four or five, a lot of trees. Ace Hardware, the owner of the property had reached out to us and then was going to be traveling for some time, so we haven't heard back from them. Yet as to their availability. Member Daniels has heard. From the owner of that property as well, that is trickier. But nonetheless, well, when he returns back from this extended vacation, we'll be back in touch with him.
I just want to echo what Randy said, that presentation from NC State was excellent. They came up with a lot of good ideas and a lot of things I think we need to look at incorporating into our future planning. They had some really novel stuff of how to deal with the stormwater. And how to deal with. They had a really novel idea for housing by putting on floating. Facilities on a pier in Shallow Bag Bay and just letting it go up and down with the water. Level variation during a storm. But, you know, a lot of good stuff that we could look at possibly incorporating into future planning. If nobody has anything else, is there a motion to adjourn?
Move adjournment?
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting's adjourned.